Yeah, call me in order.
Your meeting. I put truth and reconciliation on the agenda because I was just asked if I had any agenda items, but we can do that second if you want, although there's people here for it.
Yeah, why don't we do that first? Um, hey, how are you? I wanted to talk primarily about overall millage and then that'll lead into fire assessment, which will then lead into maybe some fire discussions.
All right, well, let's do the truth and reconciliation thing first. So, um, the reason I wanted to talk with you specifically about it, um, well, first of all, let me give you a little background. And I think the manager was going to, did she pull up the website?
Yeah.
Um, the manager is on November thirteenth, at the meeting of November thirteenth, I think in the evening, is going to respond to that, um, that long non-motion that we, we just sent to her as a referral. And part of it was to develop the archives and so forth. So this is an example. Can you just sort of click through it real quick? And that's, that's a fascinating picture. Look at the African-American dude there looking at old Joe. That picture's easily from the, based on the age of those trees, probably from the twenties or thirties or something. Uh, just kind of go down it. So there's going to be different portions of the site, most of which have almost no information in them, but the, uh, it will be the place where as information is developed, either by county staff or by university folks or by local museums, whatever. We can either link to it or store it there. What's fascinating about it, click on documents. So they've gone back and put in the minutes of a bunch of meetings where there were critical issues discussed.
Eighteen?
Yeah, eighteen's, eighteen fifty-three Board of County Commission Meeting Minutes. And all of these have been transcribed, so you don't, you're not expected to read that, but it shows the actual documents.
So this site is to, is to be, uh?
We're hosting it, but it's kind of like everybody's site. Madam Manager, I was, we were just-
Sorry, you got to this one first.
Yeah, we decided to talk about this one first because there's people here for it. And we didn't want to make them sit through the fire assessment discussion. Do you want to navigate this and show?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay.
So this, um, this is just a static site for now and you can see it, the language is not really in here. This is for whatever you all decide. We just kind of wanted to show you what we could do with a dedicated site. Um, and so we just kind of gave you an example. Um, it is not, none of this is set in stone. You know, we have an about section. We kind of threw some, just a little bit of things in here with the, um, history, um, explore history. So media would go here. We threw in some examples of things that we already had. And, um-
So Hutch, is it your thought that, um, the community would populate this?
Yeah, and-
With historical stories?
Yeah, the notion that we had was that this is essentially a disaggregated process. There's two ways to do these truth and reconciliation things, the way everybody else does it and the way we're doing it. And the way everybody else does it is they appoint a big blue ribbon commission and they get twenty-five or fifty people on it and they meet forever and they come up with some written report and they sort of put it out there. And, um, that runs into problems with Florida sunshine law because everybody that we appoint to such a, or whoever appoints to such a commission, then can't talk to each other. And historical research is a lot about talking to each other and stuff. So by, by allowing, uh, by allowing each, and then the other thing is that people think the county commission can tell everybody what to do. We really can't. We can't tell the university what they need to do in terms of talking about educational disparities. Yeah, or the sheriff or anybody else, but it's up to each, if we do a really good job with the stuff that we know we can control, then I hope that the other organizations will, will step up with pressure from people and, and so forth to do the right thing, so.
So in thinking about the county then, are we having each of the departments?
This was referred to all of our advisory boards and all of our departments. And some of them have come back with information and ideas and some are a little slower. But the point is, we know that there were things that Alachua County Board of County Commissioners did or didn't do that were critical to particularly the Jim Crow era, which is really, that's the part of, that's the part of the history that Alachua County Commissioners and government was really involved in. Prior to that, um, you know, the slave era and so forth, and even back into the Spanish era and so forth, there's a lot less that we can know and, and the stories aren't there. But I went out to the Newberry Truth and Reconciliation, their first public meeting. And it was fascinating because the people that were up there talking were folks who had heard, at, at most, you were secondhand from stories of, um, pretty horrific atrocities and so forth. In some cases, you know, Jim Crow, I can remember when that building across the street had two entrances, you know, white entrance and colored entrance. So, um, I've, I'm old enough to have seen, I remember when this building had white and colored water fountains. And so, um, so anyway, we can, we know what county go- and we, we know that a lot of roads were built with, um, leased prison labor, which was basically throwing black guys in jail and making them work for a year.
So is it your hope that we start?
That we do, that we do our stuff really well and then we, and then we have ways that the university or the sheriff or the, um, the real estate community or whoever has a part of the story to tell about the truth part. And then the reason I, I think it's important for you to be involved is with your kind of accountant's and auditor's mind, I think we need to start putting numbers on these things. What was it worth? Because we didn't pay laborers to work on roads, but we had prisoners do it. And what, what was the cost of that? And, um, there's been a lot of accounting of the cost of slavery, the value of the labor done and, and that sort of thing. There's been a lot less accounting done of the cost of Jim Crow in terms of the inequities. We know what they are today. We can read the equity report and we can say, well, we know that these are some differences today. But I think it'd be really, because I'm also very serious about this reparations part. And reparations just wigs people out when they hear the words, like they're coming for my wallet and they're gonna, but I think there's a lot of things that county government in particular can do that ought to be counted towards reparations. Children's Trust would be one of them. And I think we can show that here's the deficit that we created with our policies. And it's huge. It's going to be, uh, hun- millions, hundreds of millions of dollars or whatever, just in Alachua County. But here's what we're doing to whittle away at that. It may take us a hundred years. I mean, Jim Crow lasted a hundred years. And so if it takes us a hundred years to make things right, we need to start somewhere. And just to think about the, the accounting principles that one would apply to that, I think it's important. Because, um, otherwise there will be people on both sides of the equation thinking that we're not doing anything or we're not doing enough or whatever.
Well, I think just having the conversation is, is getting it started is important. Um, I, I would, I would be curious to know how much history, um, our existing staff has that was kind of passed down from department to department. I mean, I know the Lions were saved by the Public Works Department. And I think our historical commission has a role to play in kind of documenting that. Is that what this website is supposed to do?
Yeah.
Does we gather information? We put it up there?
So, a couple of things. You mentioned on the reparation side. So one thing we had as a suggestion is that under reparations, a, a couple of things that we thought were important on the reparation side were the policies and ordinances that the board adopts as one of those to show what have we done as a county to help with inequities. That's really where we're going, you know, with, with the inequity piece. But when you look at, um, on the history side, so doc-
I guess I don't necessarily think of that always as reparations. I think of that as just good government. You know, and I, I don't, um, I've heard you make that analogy twice now about the children's trust, but I think it's, that's just good government. I don't, I don't think of it in a reparations way.
So, when you ask what records we have, they've asked me to come up here. So here's an example. This is the, one of the things. This is a, um, a translation of this document, which is, you know, we had the translations of all of our commission minutes. This is actually the Board of County Commission Minutes from June first of eighteen sixty-three, where the Board of County Commissioners set the taxes for the year. And if you notice, the taxes for the year ordered that the tax for eighteen sixty-three on the following species of property be assessed as follows, uh, on Negroes of six hundred and fifty dollars per head. And then it goes through of how much for land, how much for pine land improvements per acre, how much for horses, and I can't say everything from here, mules, two hundred dollars per head. So it is very clear the role that the county played, um, for many years. And so there, there are many, many documents like this, if you start searching, that, um, can be pulled in. And by the way, just if you look at two thousand and eighteen dollars, that's about eighteen thousand dollars per person.
I was about to ask you, do we know the census of what the county looked like? Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good, that's an exercise.
So this, this would tell you in eighteen sixty-three how much of the county's budget, essentially. Um, and, you know, interestingly enough, just from the, the small amount that we've looked at, the county would then go out and count and then bring people back in and say, now you owe us this much more because you have more than, you have more people than you said you had. And make people come back and pay the additional taxes. So you, you can jet, you can determine how much revenue was collected. So that's just one exercise. And then you have the issue of the roads. Um, I, I have reached out-
Having the discussion is, uh, is important. I mean-
Absolutely. Well, truth and reconciliation, you gotta do the truth part and this stuff will blow people's minds. It's already-
Well, that just put in the context what you were attempting to, that I didn't understand what you were saying. Now I understand at a better level.
I did reach out to, um, the professor, I'd have to look up her name. She is the Director of African-American Studies at the University of Florida.
Yep.
We've had some email communications-
Great.
About doing some, um, about doing research with her, using her students to do research for the county. I told her with the things that I thought the board would want to look at, that it could provide frankly years' worth of research, um, for her program. And she is interested in having that discussion. We are bringing this to the full board on November thirteenth at five P M. And so she won't be able to attend, but she said she would be watching, um, to see what the board decided.
So you'll bring forward, I guess, what you're recommending as a process forward for-
That old motion, that you've gone through it and sort of said, yes, no, maybe, dollars, whatever.
We'll talk about that. Okay.
Bring that forward.
Good. I think that's good. New board, new deck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And is anything you guys want to comment or add to the discussion here?
This is very impressive.
Well, I mean, I set as a goal, and I've talked publicly into the manager about it, is I want this county to be the one that sets the standard for how counties look at their roles. And really, this is uncharted territory. When I was up at the, um, in Montgomery, talking to them and trying to figure out what they, what their checklist was going to be to, to have gone through, they don't have one. They don't know. And so, uh, they've got some ideas, but I'd, I'd like to get out in front of this and kind of set the standard and let other people catch up.
Tell me what Newberry's doing.
Well, they, um, Jordan Marlowe's a, a history teacher and so he has decided that this is a, a good thing for his community to go through this exercise. So they're, they've had a couple of meetings of the Newberry Commission where it was talked about, but then they had their first public hear, public hearing. And they had, the way it went was they had, um, I'm going to say four or five speakers who got up from different perspectives and just sort of gave a little five, seven, ten minute talk about what either it meant to them or the memories or whatever. And one was like a, a high school student and one was like a old black person, one was an old white person. And they kind of talked about the way things were back then and the stories they'd heard. And then what, what was really interesting is they just opened the mic and-
It was like an open mic night?
Nobody knew what to expect. And it was really quite remarkable.
That's good. And was it just Jordan or was any, were any of the commissioners there?
I don't know which other commissioners were there. Certainly some of them were, but some of them clearly weren't.
Yeah. Okay. And that's, and so what are they doing? Are they doing similar to-
Well, then, then coming up, uh, what?
Document search?
Well, they're doing some research and stuff, nothing to this extent, but the, um, but I think they have people that are actively working on it. And what's fascinating is, is it the Sunday after Thanksgiving that they're having their event or the Sunday before? Anyway, all of the churches in Newberry are going to preach truth and reconciliation. And then everybody's going to get together for a big picnic.
That's good.
Yeah, and it's coming up soon. It's like, I don't know, nineteenth or twenty-third or something.
I would just say we are very, very lucky here that, that the clerk's office with their ancient records have had the, the records, all of our commission records, not just commission records, the probate records, the commission records, the deeds, all of that from the beginning of what we have have been, have been-
Digitized.
Um, yes, and, and they've been typed up from the written and can be searched. So we are truly lucky in that because these types of records are much easier to find. You don't have to go through books and, and, and flip through pages. So our ability to do this has been greatly enhanced by that project. It would been, it would have been taken years and years just to look at these records otherwise.
Well, it's taken them years to get the minutes typed.
Yeah.
I mean, it was all done with volunteers and they, um, sat there and they typed that stuff.
I just, uh, read an article recently comparing truth and reconciliation processes in South Africa, Canada, Greensboro, uh, and Maine. And one of the, the things they said is usually it's perpetrators telling their story.
We're, I guess we're recording. They want you to come up to the table.
Usually it's, um, perpetrators telling their story and victims telling their story. And what the article said is that the problem with that is you leave out structural racism. So this is wonderful process because it includes structural and systemic racism. I applaud you for this design.
Good. All right. Well, that's kind of what I've been working on. And I'm going to Montgomery with, uh, the group this weekend. And, um, there's a, a busload of, um, folks from around the community, but largely U C G folks and folks from some of the African-American organizations and churches going up together.
Good, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Good to see you.
Take care.
Sorry, I couldn't stay for the fire assessment.
It's not really a fire system. It's more just kind of a, just a discussion in general. So, um, in general, you know, I guess one of the things I want to talk to you about was, when I came on the commission, one of my goals was to get the general millage rate down so that we were not continuously being referred to as, you know, the highest taxed county in the state. I don't, I don't think that's a fair, um, characterization of our county. And also in, in adopting the fire assessment, making it more consistent with other professional fire departments around the state. I think virtually every professional fire department that I know of has a fire assessment. And so as we move into the next year, I wanted to talk to you about your thoughts on continuing that model? Or were you thinking of moving back to a ad valorem model? Or have you not thought of it?
I mean, I see the, I see the, the pros and cons of both. And, you know, when, I think it was me or one of us asked the question, is this the most progressive we can make our fire assessment? The answer, the consultant came back and said, yes.
Yeah, it's the most progressive of any fire assessment.
Right, that they've done. So as long as we maintain that, I'm willing to go back and reconsider how we do it to make it even more progressive, if that's possible. One of the things that I've been studying, if you look in the Florida trend that, that just came out, there's a, an article in, about affordable housing, one of the problems. And we keep, it keeps coming back to, and it's understandable, being Florida trend, that it's things like impact fees and stuff like that, that are one size fits all and aren't very progressive. And so I think we ought to actually go and tackle that as well and see if there's not some ways that we can make our impact fees have a little, I mean, if somebody built a tiny house, they're paying the same as somebody who's building a five thousand square foot house. It makes no sense.
Did you get the memo on the dock stamps that the attorney sent out?
Hmm, I don't recall seeing that.
Um, so there is the ability, Sylvia sent it out. There's the ability for us to enact a local-
Hmm, interesting.
Additional dock stamp for housing.
Mm-huh.
As long as we have a program in place. And so that's something that I think, you know, we could look at.
Mm-huh.
Cause it's-
Is that a referendum or we just impose it?
I think it's, I think it's three votes.
Okay.
Um, and I, and I, I think we have to have a plan in place and it needs to be obviously for-
And you fund the plan with it done, yeah.
Yeah. Um, but if, that's why I had asked her to look into that because I think down in South Florida, they're doing that. Affordable housing is the single most important issue in the state on the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, read Florida trend. They're all over it. They're, I mean, they've, they've got the numbers statewide in terms of the tiny percentage of people who are, um, able to afford housing. It just, it keeps going down, down, down.
And, and with them sweeping the Sodowsky Fund, general fund purposes, um, that, you know, that's something that we ought to look at. So that's why I did that. But I, I, I'm more interested in having the conversation with you about, do you, do you mind having this assessment model?
No, I, I, I think the assessment's fine. And, uh, I think I've pretty much voted for it all along the way as long as I knew it was going towards as progressive as we could get it. You know, we're just, we're going to continue to make the ad valorem on residential stuff screwier and screwier if this thing passes, uh, tomorrow. Yeah. And, um, so I have no idea. I mean, it, it's beyond, gone beyond my capacity. I'm pretty good at math, but to understand the implications because it's so hopscotch, you know? This part's taxed, this part's not, and they've made it impossible to understand.
Yeah, I mean-
And we're, we're kind of, we're, we're not that far beyond a county like the ones around us that are fiscally constrained. I mean, we're fiscally constrained for our own weird reason, but even so, we, uh-
Properties on the tax road.
Yeah, exactly. And so, um, you know, we're, we're right there, kind of in the, uh, in the void between if, if a certain number of people move out, then we could, uh, be held whole for this.
Well, but the reality is they're moving in.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
They're going to continue to move in. So I, I think our, our cop plan, which, uh, encourages infill is good. Uh, I think our ad valorem is now down at a level, I mean, when I got on the board, it was eight point nine, it's eight point two. Um, I think we're getting a lot out of every dollar, but Amendment One passes them around to make some different choices. Uh, one of the things that, that another commissioner talked about though is building this fire station in Hague versus having the city of Alachua step up to contribute to that fire station. Do you have any thoughts about that?
Well, it'd be nice if we had agreements to buy us out of these fire stations if they take them over or whatever. And, uh, so my problem is when we get, when we have these stranded assets that we have blown a couple million bucks on and the next thing you know, they're, um, inside a city and we're getting charged for our own fire calls, you know?
So, um, I mean, to the extent the city of Alachua wants to develop their own fire station, which I think is inevitable at some point, I think it makes sense for us to have that conversation with them.
Right.
And I think they would be open to that.
Yeah, I think some sort of, um, deal where as if they annex it, um, they own it and we come up with a way that they buy from us if we, if, you know, and our option to sell.
Okay. All right, that's all I really had.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, let me think about that for a second. Um, one of the things that, um, yeah, you need to, Colleen, you, we talked about it a little bit, but you need to check out the website and the manager will show that to you because it's really quite, quite interesting.
Are you going to Montgomery with them next year? You are? Okay, good. So maybe y'all can give us a debriefing of that, you know?
Um, the, uh, the next time we do a tax referendum for, um, open space and all that sort of business, it needs to be for trail linkages and it also needs to include conservation easements or on working farms and forests. Technically, we can do that now, but those things never-
You're talking about in the wild spaces, right?
Yeah. Those things never rise to the top in terms of scoring for ecological purposes or whatever. And, uh, by the time we get around to spending all the money that's in this cycle, which I hope we continue to spend it at a goodly rate, um, we're going to need to start preserving farm and forest land. Otherwise, we won't have any left. And the way to do that is with conservation easements. The good thing is there are state programs and federal programs that will match whatever we put in locally. So we'd only be spending fifty cents on the dollar. And since it's easements, we're only spending fifty cents on the value of the land. So for, for, if we're looking at a piece of farmland worth two or three thousand bucks an acre and, uh, you know, we're, we're paying maybe twenty-five percent of that to get an easement on it, assuming the owner wants to continue in the farming and forestry business, which, which many do.
Right, right, right. Yeah, no, I think continuing, uh, farming is important.
So anyway, uh, my goal is before we run out of money to run another referendum, I don't know exactly what the right year is, probably not twenty twenty, maybe twenty twenty-two. I may or may not be on the commission, but think about that because you will be. And I think it would be immensely popular with rural interests, the way none of these things have in the past. And then you add in the, we're going to, part of this trail town and these other, uh, jobs we're working on is to map out what our connected corridor is going to look, corridor's going to look like. We need to start, like, filling in the gaps.
Yeah.
And we really don't have a tool to do that right now. Because there's some who only want the bicycle network to be for commuting bicyclists instead of for the recreational and tourist bicycle user. Uh, it doesn't, you know, those F D O T monies don't work.
Right, right. Yeah.
The other things, I'd love to see some T D C money go there. I know we're locking a lot of it in, but as soon as, um, as soon as the, within a few years, it'll be really clear that the tourist dollars are outstripping what we pledged.
Right.
Then whatever that gap is, I think would be great to use on some of that kind of infrastructure.
Right, trails. Okay, good.
All right, so Colleen, what we talked about, so I'm done. So, Colleen, what we talked about was, uh, on November thirteenth, the manager's bringing forward, um, her response, the staff's response to the thirteen eleven, uh, part motion that we talked about but didn't adopt. It included that. It's a pretty interesting website. Are you looking at it now?
I see the minutes of June first eighteen sixty-three on the screen.
Did you read the text it is with it?
Yeah.
And, uh, so anyway, but there's a lot of, uh, information that we want to be able to populate that website and, and to make it broad enough that anybody associated with Alachua County issues can either have their links on the site so we can go straight from there to the Cotton Club or to the Aqueon Simmons Museum or university's resources, or can, or we can house it because we're, we're interested in having kind of a one-stop shop for people to find anything to do with our truth and reconciliation process. So we, we're not presuming that we're the ones who are doing it all, but we are presuming that we're the ones that can link to it. And a part of it makes sense because the clerk of the court is the one that keeps a lot of historical records. And, uh-
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
How are you going to bring the daughters of competitors to enter this discussion?
Um, I'll tell you what's interesting. I talked with them maybe two or three years ago and they're not all hardcore, uh, right-wingers. Some of them are actual real students of history and love the historical context of what's going on. I actually don't think it would be a problem. What we did by giving Joe to them, um, in a way was a, um, our own little reconciliation with them. Just take it. You know, we're not-
Yeah, I heard some of actually, it was at the anniversary of Wu-ya statue, some came and held like a, a crying session or something.
Oh, really?
Where the statues did.
So it's all part of the history of what's going on. And I think they will find this truth and reconciliation stuff as interesting as anybody. I'm not, I'm not too-
Interested to see their react?
Yeah, I'm not too worried about that. But anyway, um, so on November thirteenth, I hope you and the troops will be there to help guide us because we, we don't have, um, all of the ideas or answers for what we ought to do as far as the truth parts of- to do as far as the truth parts of it go. And that's kind of what we're dealing with now. And I'd love for us to be able to provide some resources to the, you know, university students and, and high school interns and so forth to be able to do the pieces of the research. Because I think, um, we could, we could turn this community into a, a, a town of historians in the process. If we take some funding from, uh, the county and from private philanthropy and so forth to do it, I'm sure we can make something out of it.
Um, I have your attention too.
Thanks, and I'll see you on Friday, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Good. Thanks for calling this meeting, Commissioner Cornell.
Okay. We are, sure.